All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is 2:06 PM, so we're going to go ahead and get started. This is our Economic Community Development Committee. I'm Councilman John Bullock, Vice Chair of the Committee, Acting as Chair, standing in for Vice President Middleton, who cannot be with us today. Do want to recognize the members of the committee that are here. Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District, Oder Ramos of the 14th District, and Robert Stokes of the 12th District, our council colleagues doing great work. Also joined by our colleague and sponsor of today's bill, Councilman Z. Cohen of the 1st District. I see, I also want to recognize Staff of the Committee Tony Levo for always being diligent. We also have representatives from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. We also have representatives from the Council President's Office, as well as Housing and Community Development and other agencies. I also see BDC as well. So again, we will, we will go ahead and get started. And again, today, we will be hearing City Council Bill 230357, the Strengthening Renters' Safety Act. And again, just to read this out for you before we go on to the sponsor, again, for the purpose of establishing a priority inspection, establishing criteria for priority dwellings and the priority inspections, requiring the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development to post certain notices, amending certain rental dwelling license application requirements, amending certain prerequisites for new and renewed rental dwelling licenses, amending license fees, updating inspection requirements, requiring the posting of license numbers, updating causes for denial, suspension, or revocation of a license, bolstering public access to information, authorizing the initiation of the enforcement of the subtitle by complaint, providing for certain data collection, establishing for the Baltimore City Rental License and Inspection Task Force, providing for the composition, terms, and organizations of the task force, establishing the duties of the task force, adding civil citation fine for violating license requirements, requiring annual reporting, and amending certain definitions, providing a time period. Again, this was introduced back in 2023 by Councilmember Z. Cohen, who I will ask for a few comments right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the members of the committee. I also want to really thank DHCD. The team has been really, really good to partner with, as well as Tyler and the administration, Nina, Faith, just the whole. Back and forth has been, I think, just really strengthened this legislation, so I want to thank you for that. Vice Chair Bullock and committee members, you may remember that the last time this committee met to hear this bill in March, we had differences of opinion with DHCD and the administration. I'm grateful that the agency and administration have engaged in good faith and devoted a significant amount of staff time and effort toward reaching compromise. That compromise is what you will see in the amendments reflected on your desk. I want to briefly recount why I introduced this bill. Though DHCD and the council have done good work over the past decade to improve rental licensing and the inspections in our city, only 46% of units, of units are licensed. Tenants broadly don't understand the importance of living in a licensed building or their rights if they live in an unlicensed building. We need to do better. All residents deserve to feel safe and be safe inside their homes. A small number of slum lords are neglecting their responsibilities under the law and causing disproportionate harm to our most vulnerable residents. And in this bill, we truly seek to target only those bad actors who are persistently causing issues within our city. This is not an anti-landlord bill, this is an anti-slumlord bill. Interior violation notices have not been a strong enough tool to bring the worst actors into compliance. This bill defines the worst actors in an objective, data-driven way, and defines these buildings as priority dwellings. A subset of these billing, buildings receive proactive inspections twice per year until conditions improve, and failing to address an issue identified in one of these inspections can result in penalties up to and including the loss of a building's rental license. This bill also informs tenants about the conditions and license status of their current and prospective residences. When DHCD knows that a building is unlicensed, they will order the landlord to post notices to tenants that inform them of their rights. When landlords, when a landlord applies for rental license, they must distribute the inspection report to tenants. A building's status as a priority dwelling for the past five years will be published by DHCD. Additionally, whenever a unit is advertised for rent, the landlord is required to include the license number so prospective tenants and DHCD can check that it's valid. Finally, the bill requires DHCD to publish a detailed annual report on rental licensing and inspections. Now, I want to share a bit more about the amendments that we developed in partnership with DHCD and the administration. So first, there was some talk about the task force. That task force has been removed from the bill, and in its place, the City Council will conduct detailed annual oversight in partnership with stakeholders, advocates, and community partners. I look forward to using the council's oversight powers to ensure that this bill is implemented properly and that rental conditions improve for our residents. We've changed the funding mechanism of the bill. Before, a license fee was levied on priority dwellings. Now, we have introduced a new set of interior property maintenance citations ranging from $50 to $500 that can be levied on property dwell, priority dwellings. This is not only a new funding mechanism, but also a new tool in DHCD's toolbox to bring the worst actors in, into compliance. As part of the council's oversight, we will make sure that these citations are being issued properly and that this bill is at least revenue neutral. We also have an amendment to require the owners and operators of priority dwellings to meet with DHCD to discuss violations and plans for improvement. This will help to set expectations and hopefully improve conditions before further accountability measures are necessary. Those are our top-line edits, and some additional information can be found in your packets. Happy to answer any questions, but again, appreciate the partnership that brought us to this point.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. And also, at this point, do want to go over our agency reports. I know the administration is here, may have some words, but do want to make sure that our agencies stand by the reports?
Yes.
All right. Any word you'd like to offer at this point, good sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the committee. For those who don't know and for the public, my name is Tyler Schnella. I'm the Mayor's Council Liaison to the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I appreciate the opportunity to return before you today to offer remarks on the Strengthening Renters Safety Act. As chair by the sponsor and his remarks, the last time we were in this chamber discussing this legislation, the administration and the sponsor were not fully aligned on certain aspects, and this was evident in Vice President Middleton's directive for the administration and the sponsor to revisit the drawing board and find a path forward. The administration has approached this task with the mayor's consistent priority in mind, that is, ensuring the safe environment housing options are available to all Baltimoreans in every neighborhood. It was crucial for us to collaborate closely with the sponsor of this, of this legislation to ensure that we got it right, as this legislation is vital in strengthening the city's ability to hold some of the worst offenders accountable. Those who disregard the upkeep of their rental properties, often to the detriment of our most vulnerable residents. I'm here to report that we've done just that. Over the past five months, the administration and the sponsor's office have engaged in multiple meetings, and for Ethan and I, often lasting hours, to discuss and refine ways to advance this important piece of legislation. The amendments before you today are the result of this partnership, reflecting our shared commitment to prioritizing safe and vibrant housing for all Baltimoreans, regardless of where they live or who their property owner is. Mr. Vice Chair and members of the committee, the administration stands in full support of these amendments and this legislation, and we are confident that we will take yet another step forward in protecting the rights and well-being of renters across our city. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. We also, given, given your point, right, we do have some, some amendments from our agencies. Do want to provide an opportunity to not only go over those amendments, but also to hear any additional commentary from any of our agencies at this point. That's the SE for City Solicitor, the approval form of legal sufficiency, and HCD is favorable with amendment, would you like to go over the amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. As Tyler mentioned, we work together closely on the development of these amendments, and we are in support of the bill with these favorable amendments. We don't have anything additional to add at this time.
Thank you very much. Any additional commentary? Any questions from members of the committee? Yes, Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to thank the sponsor for your leadership on this, and also, you know, really working through it so that it is solid and it's going to work for everybody, and I really appreciate that. And thank you to the agencies for working on this important bill. I did have a question that this bill, as far as I understand, still only works with buildings that are 20 or more units, is that correct? Okay. And it looks like a lot of the amendments that have been put in, that you all have worked on, could also be relevant to single family, is that correct? We just haven't put it in the, the law yet? Like doing interior inspections and those kinds of things?
Look, I think I need more clarification, there's so many amendments.
Less than 20, less than 20, buildings less than 20 units?
Yes.
Okay. And we just haven't, we need to do a separate law to be able to integrate all of those, is that correct, or is that integrated in here?
I think that the, the number of units that was decided in the bill was based off of the reality of the capacity of the agency to perform inspections, to identify these properties, and so we worked through that particularly to try and get at these larger, multi-family buildings that may be presenting hazardous conditions.
Right, although we do have a lot of additional properties that are also, you know, with the same issues. And we don't have to take time here, but I'm just getting a sense of the fact that we need to expand some of this to other properties as well at some point in time, not today, but in some point in time. Well, I would like to, and you don't have to comment on that, because I think the tools that you all have come up with here are great and really should be applied across the city, and so that'll be some other discussion another day. And then my second question, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, is, you know, I do know that a, one of the interested parties has come to us with a few other amendments, and I do want to say I did look at them, and it's unfortunate that they have come in so late. None of them are going to be changing the bill, so I don't think we even need to consider them, frankly. And I don't know what your plan is, Mr. Chair, but it's, you know, this has been a long time coming, and you'd think that some of the other players that are trying to influence this would have already been engaged, and were, they were engaged, but, you know, I knew from the sponsor that they were engaged, and I don't think we should slow anything up. I think the sponsor and the agencies have done a lot of great work, and we should just move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes?
I really don't have no questions, but I just want to pass on everybody that former councilwoman Warren Branch passed away yesterday, so, yeah.
Councilman Stokes, I, I did not know that, so thank you for sharing that for the body. We appreciate you sharing that. And to your point, Councilmember Ramos, we're also going to check for public testimony if anybody here signed up. Is Kathy Howard here? How are you?
I'm always, I'm always here, and once again, I'm here. I'm trying, I have. Sorry, button on the right. There it is, thank you. Thank you very much. This is, I'm Kathy Howard, I work with Regional Management, Inc., one of the Baltimore City landlords that are very, very concerned about what they do and how well they do it with, for their tenants. We are also a member of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. I know that the Maryland Multi-Housing Association has been working on this bill for a long time, just as, and we still, unfortunately, do have a, a few places where we still think that there need to be tweaks. You have our written testimony, at least you should have your, our written testimony, I believe it was uploaded this morning, and we're, just in, in a very quick way, we are concerned that there are things in this bill that might be, although you don't intend to necessarily get the good actors into this bill because they are good actors, some of the ways these, these things are written are potentially going to catch those tunas in the, in the net. And we're very concerned about the, the fact that there are, you know, 20, 20 units, and it, in multi-family dwellings, particularly the way that they are put together in our, in our tax lot licensing situation, they can actually potentially be determined to be a priority building when, in fact, there is only one unit, perhaps, with four violations in a 20-some or a 50-some, and in cases like us, we have 125 units in one particular building. And one unit could have four violations, and I think that you may find yourself in a situation where there is a, a, a priority building, shall we say, stigma putting on, put on to that particular large area, and it would not be rational to do that. I think that there are also things, the, the concept of us pri, giving every applicant certain information about licensing and things along those lines at the application stat, part of their, of their seeking housing is also something that probably should be done by request, as opposed to having the landlords having stacks and stacks of their, you know, of their licenses to give out to people who are either applicants or new tenants. They may or may not want that information, but if they ask for it, we're perfectly happy to do that. It just is a very time-consuming and potentially expensive thing that we, that need not be done unless the tenant or the applicant is really interested in that information. The other thing that we also have is that the, the question of whether or not, when a place should be decided to be a priority group, you know, under the bill, it should have something to do with whether or not those violations that put them potentially in that category are unabated. If they're abated, if, there should be no problem, but if they are unabated, have it, that's great. You should, they should be punished for that, and be, and be in a priority status. But that's the, that's the, the, the part of this that we also find is potentially going to catch people in a situation where they are not necessarily trying to do the wrong thing. Again, I think I would suggest that you talk, look at the MMHA written, written comments, and we appreciate you looking at them, and I don't think that it, we, what we're trying to do is to hang this up in any way, we just want to make it better.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, just for one second. Does any, do any committee members or sponsor have any questions or comments for Ms. Howard?
I do.
Yes, yeah, Councilman Stokes, please.
Can you explain again, when you talked about if you have a unit of 125, and you have some violations in that unit, how did it affect the rest of those?
As far, from, from my reading of what the bill would do, if you have, if you have 125 units, one of them has four or more violate, one of those units has four or more violations, it appears to me that the idea here is that, that the entire building is going to not be having a license until those things get, gets fixed. Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm misreading the bill, but that's what I am very concerned about, because one bad apple should not spoil the rest of the, the rest of the building. In fact, in the, the legislature, two years ago, did react to that problem in one of the state statutes with regards to inspections and licensing, and I would suggest that I can send, in fact, I have a copy of that law as it was passed during that session, and I think it would be helpful to take a look at that, just to make sure that we are not going down that kind of path.
And can you explain to, if that happens, how did it affect the rest of the residents that actually live in that development?
Well, I think that the rest of the residents, thinking that they are in a, a licensed building, if there is a problem with one or the, one, one particular unit that is, you know, oftentimes, you got to remember, sometimes these are not, these, these violations take place not because the landlord hasn't done something, sometimes it's because a tenant is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, or doing something they shouldn't be doing. And that then, it affects the rest of the, of the units in that building. That's why I'm, you know, MMHA, as well as Regional Management, are concerned about how we're putting this language together.
Thank you. Want to note, we've also been joined by Councilman Glover of the 13th District. Thank you for joining us. Any additional questions or comment from the sponsor, please?
Yeah, no, first, I appreciate the concerns, and I do appreciate the ongoing dialogue with MMHA. We have certainly attempted to keep ourselves in dialogue, and I appreciate you all being at the table with us. I, I do just want to make sure there's accuracy, though, here. So first thing to note is that it would require two criteria to be on the list, so not just the four violation notices, but an additional criteria as well, and there's a whole matrix of them, and, you know, for those that are paying attention at home, and for my colleagues worth looking at those criteria. And then two is, I do just want to clarify that going on the priority dwelling list does not mean your license is removed. It means that you are now on a list where DHCD can proactively inspect your building two or more times per year, and that there are a cascading set of penalties if you do not remediate the concerns. So it does not have an immediate financial penalty to the landlord, it does not even have, it is not going to result in your license being immediately taken away. It is essentially to put you on this list to say, we are concerned about an ongoing set of challenges within your building, please correct said challenges, and if you fail to do that, there will be these penalties that will come. I, I think it's a fairly reasonable expectation that when someone gets four more violations in a unit and has any of the additional set of concerns that are part of this bill, that they then become part of this list and have to remediate or abate all the issues in their building.
Thank you. I'm, I, we, we share your concern, and it just is one of these situations where I believe that there are a lot of, a lot of folks who really care about what they do in the rental housing space, and we are very concerned, however, that there is not, not a penalty assessed when we are trying to abate something or get a problem tenant out of a, a unit or tenant or tenants. And that's, those are the things that we are concerned that, that, that we are allowed to try to do in order to be in a good stead with the department.
But just to be clear, if the issue is abated, then there is not a penalty?
Right. Yes, I understand that, and that's what we, that's what our language is trying to get at, to make sure that if, if there is, if there are violations and they are abated, then they don't count against you in, in making you into a priority building. That's, as long as that's clear, that would be great.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilman Stokes?
So you're asking that change part of the amendment, because if this is a Renters Act, and we talking about protecting renters, if that does not change from our understanding, we really not protecting them because of what you were talking about in terms of 125 people in the development and five people. So I want to make sure, when we say Renters Act, we are protecting the renters. So I think we need to, Ms. Councilman Cohen, if we got to add something to that in terms of, we can't spell Renters Act, and we really not supporting them, and that amendment might be needed just for a safety net also.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Any additional questions for Ms. Howard?
We'll be happy to work with you, as always.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the chambers who would like to testify before we go to online? All right. Oh, sorry, Councilman Dorsey, please.
I just want to just say that I'm really thankful for all the work that's gone into improving this bill to where it is today. I think it's the set of amendments and all the work that's gone into it. I would say make this a remarkably good bill. I'm also cognizant of the fact that the, it's got a long leeway to it, right? It's got a long lead, lead time for implementation, and so I don't want anybody to walk away from this with the sense that like, there's some change that can't be further modified between now and what, January 2026 is the implementation date? So if anybody has any, you know, unique individuals and substantive concerns with this, you know, there's more than a year between now and implementation to make further tweaks, but I'm, I think as we heard from the sponsor and as we heard from the administration, these amendments make this for, you know, what was a good bill to begin with, a, a really great bill, that I'm really happy to hopefully see moving forward with these amendments here today.
And I do want to say to the Councilman's concerns, the tweaks that Ms. Howard is asking for would protect landlords, not renters. So I, I just want to be clear for the record that this is about Strengthening Renters Safety Act, and I actually really appreciate, again, the thoughtful partnership from MMHA, from Ms. Howard, from Aaron, from all the folks who have repeatedly come and engaged, I think, in good faith, but I think we should also be clear, as we are navigating and negotiating around legislation, whose interests are being represented. So again, I appreciate you all coming and speaking up on behalf of landlords, and again, in my view, the vast majority of landlords in our city do the right thing. You know, unfortunately, as we know, and as you know, there's a small handful that do not, and what we have truly tried to do, and again, I really want to thank Tyler, the administration, Mr. Hessler, all the folks at DHCD, is operate with a scalpel and try to be surgical about who this bill impacts and not have it be paint in broad strokes. And so do just appreciate the partnership to the Councilman Dorsey's point, you know, of course, if there is some piece that we want to be in further conversation about, always our door is open.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I don't see any hands raised online. What I will say, I'm going to sound very provisorial because I'll be back in the classroom Monday, but it's really good to see this dialogue, and this is how legislation happens, right? I mean, you introduce something, you'll have commentary, you'll have feedback, you'll have interaction between council members, and that's how we get to the best results here, so I appreciate that back and forth. We do have one hand up, and we will go to, is this Kyle, Kyle Wong? Kyle Wong?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Yeah, I just, thank you, everyone, for being able to speak today. I just have a question about the, I guess, the inspections, how they're paid for, is that paid through the fees that are, I guess, the landlords accrue? I just want to make sure that there's also, like, proper enforcement or proper ability to actually inspect at the rate that's needed to, to protect renters. So if you could just elaborate on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Councilman Cohen, please. Or, or DHCD, either. Okay. Oh, the, the question I heard was how is it being paid for, the, the inspection?
Okay, so if the question is how are the inspections being paid for, there are two different types of inspections when it comes to rental. there are two different types of inspections when it comes to rental licensing and enforcement. So, for the initial issuance of the license, the landlords are responsible for hiring a third-party inspector to inspect the property and complete a DHCD form on those inspections. After that, and the inspections that are within this bill, those would be code enforcement inspectors that are doing those inspections. So, there is an additional charge for those inspections. That would be part of what the agency does. If we find violations, we would be issuing violation notices and citations, depending on what was found and what was appropriate.
And I think to the premise of Kyle's question, the idea is that this bill would be revenue neutral. And so, the idea is that we, the additional inspections would be paid for, hopefully by the fees collected.
Laura Larson, Department of Finance, I just want to clarify that based off of the information we know today, we do not believe that this legislation will be revenue neutral. Based off the information we have from Housing, they still believe that they will need additional staffing resources in order to fully implement the policy. So, we do anticipate that the incremental impact of implementing the policy will be about a million dollars a year.
Thank you for the clarity. Is there anyone else online who'd like to testify? Okay, I don't see any additional hands raised online. Anyone else in chambers who want to go on one last time? Okay, well, I appreciate both the questions online, as well as testimony here in the chambers. Is there a motion for us to move the amendments favorably?
I'll move the amendments.
Okay, so. Right, so we're talking about the amendments that were previously received by members of the council, not additional side. A motion on the floor has been moved by Dorsey.
To move the sponsor's amendments, yes.
Right. Move sponsor members. Okay. Yes, Councilman Stokes, what's your question?
Just real quick, and I know Commissioner, Jason just mentioned about, he was talking about staffing. How much, we could more staffing, we're going to add to housing and code enforcement. I support the Renters Act, but housing already, code enforcement already short in terms of staffing. So, is this going to put more, adding more staffing to, to housing, Deputy Commissioner? Or finance, what's the financial cost on us, if there's one?
So, I know he said a million, but go ahead.
Mr. Chair, there's a motion on the floor.
I know. They want me to answer real quickly before we?
Do you want me to take that? So, based off of the analysis of the legislation from Housing, they anticipate needing 11 additional staff members to implement the policy. That adds additional staff capacity to code enforcement through both a combination of additional inspectors, but also data analysis capacity, and I believe there's a community ombudsman, and then the clerical support needed to support the program. Now, obviously, as we've, we've talked about in this chamber before, there is issues within code enforcement regarding the high number of vacancies that we have for this service. So, I think one of the things that we would be looking at with HCD between now and implementing the policy is what is the staffing model that we need in order to be successful in code enforcement? And how do we work to ensure that we are filling those vacancies so that we have adequate staffing level to fully implement this policy, as well as many of the other items that are overseen by code enforcement?
And thank you, Councilman Stokes, for the question and providing that level of clarity. Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded, the sponsor's amendments, to be clear, so thank you for that. Okay, so Chair Milton is not here, excused. Councilman Bullock, yea. Conway absent. Dorsey? Dorsey is yes. Glover? Glover's yes. Ramos? And Stokes? All right, five yays, no nays. All right. Is there now a motion to move the bill favorable with amendments?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, if I may. We're moving the MOGR 5, August 24, August 20 of 2024 amendments, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay. Those are administration amendments. When you said sponsor, that's why I kind of got confused. I just, I know, I just wanted to be sure that we were talking about the same thing.
And this is important for the public record, so again, that the sponsor has been in communication with the administration, and the amendments are aligned with both divisions.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Friendly amendments.
Just for clarification, yes, I moved the amendments. They were presented to me by the sponsor's staff. I was not aware that they were labeled as MOGR amendments. I regarded them as sponsor amendments, so everybody's real clear on the record. Thank you.
We're all clear. I love the clarity today. All right, is there a motion to move the bill favorably amended? All right, so it's moved by Dorsey, again, seconded by Ramos, again. All right. So, Milton, we know is not with us. Bullock, yes. Conway absent. Dorsey? Dorsey, yes. Glover? Glover, yes. Ramos? Ramos is yes. And Stokes? Stokes is yes. So, that is five yays, no nays, two absents. So, the bill passes favorable amendments, and we'll go on to the full council. All right. Well, again, we thank you all for coming out today. Again, we thank the sponsor for their diligence on this effort. We thank you for all of your time. At this moment, we will stand adjourned. Have a good rest of the day.